Continue to do is have that down here on this end. But when we come to where that open field is, we wanted to regrade the existing open field there. And that would, you know, create a little better slope than what's existing out there to help that area drain back towards the ditch. And that also, also creates a little more storage capacity for a big event. So the idea is the water fills up the manhole in a small event, or storm, or rain event, I'm sorry if I keep saying that. In the small event, it would run down the channel and probably wouldn't really affect this area at all. In a bigger event, it's gonna start to fill in and, you know, since the slope is so flat, this area will start to backfill into this area kind of as a temporary storage. And as the ditch, the water in the ditch begins to, you know, lower, this area will begin to lower and drain back towards the ditch. It's still extremely flat out there. We're looking at like a half percent slope, which is, it's flat. You would never even notice that half percent out there. But that's about as minimum as we can go is to try to get grass to drain. That's why we have the concrete liner in the lot of this, we're at about a point three percent slope, or point oh three percent slope in there to get that to drain. That's kind of the idea of how the stormwater's supposed to work. Sammy had mentioned he would still like to try to create some sort of, kind of to dress up the area. And that's what you see with some evergreen trees and some deciduous trees along the edges to kind of, kind of dress it up and to kind of continue what you guys already had going on, on the backside of the elementary school with trees along the fence and along the ditch. If a fence would be required, the one thing that would probably be different from what you guys existing have is the fence just is a continuous line along the, along the existing ditch. We would have to break that fence where we're tying in the new ditch to the existing ditch. And really, the best spot to put that is on the backside of the alley on the north side of the ditch. Because if we put the fence on this side, it starts to become issues with that stormwater being able to come back up into that area. Yeah, the water could get up into there, but then you're starting to start to see debris collecting on that fence and things like that. It really would just be a better situation for the fence to be on the north side of the proposed ditch. Any questions?
So the fence would separate the alley from the ditch?
Yes, that, that would be the recommended.
For your proposal, ground for the new ditch?
Yes, the, the, and the proposal for the point three six acres is the little strip here that the, what we were calling the ditch could be in, which is about thirty-five foot wide, the length of that alley.
So the development challenge is how do you fit a ditch in an alley and develop into that tight space? And what solution is to route the ditch across the district property?
Yes, yes.
Or make a revised ditch, sort of similar ditch, but?
Yeah, it's kind of just wider than that one area, I guess is one way you can look at it.
Where does the alley kind of continues into the neighboring?
To the east.
Yeah, is that, or the alley, is that an alley that continues?
Yes, there's an existing alley behind this neighborhood that it continues on to the west that we're tying into.
I have some question, just to clarify, the green space on your diagram, is district owned property, if I'm correct?
Yes, yes, this area, this area, yes, yes.
So the only reason you're, you're trying to access district property is to accommodate an alley for development, is that?
No, the entrance can be to the duplexes on this side. The only thing we're asking is the point three six so we can more, really work on our drainage.
So is that horizontal brown line just a drainage ditch?
Yes, ma'am. And that's that point three six acres that we're asking to be able to use. And in return, we're thinking to make a purchase or easement or that part of it.
But that drainage ditch already is there, why not just leave it the way it is?
Well, go ahead and explain why.
Well, it, it currently doesn't drain very well, it doesn't, right now it ponds up down here. There is, there isn't, you know, in the, it's an existing condition, there isn't enough fall for it to actually even work very well from, from the east to the west. When we, when we build it, when we build the streets, we're gonna have to put in storm pipe. And this ditch can't exist in this area with this, with the storm pipe. Because the storm pipe's gonna be at least two to three feet down in the ground for, for it to work.
And actually, the city's working and tying up this drainage all the way to the pond by Shawman Street. From the experience they had from the last rain, how the water filled up both retention ponds, so we're gonna go underground from this point all the way to Shawman. Whereas the ponds on that top side that, that's been dug, that's gonna be connected all the way to Shawman from there. So that's gonna be just to help the whole area for the drainage.
So it'll be underground, under the yellow portion, the developed portion, but it'll be above ground behind the elementary school?
Yes, it'll come out of the ground at this point.
So? So when the capacity exceeds the underground line to the old folks pit, then will the excess go above ground on this threshold?
Yes, yes, it'll, it's designed it, I mean, what we're trying, what will be built is just basically a manhole, you know, four foot round. It's a way to get down to sand, so, and it's a way to achieve being able to get your stormpipe that's laying out here in the street to slope enough to get it to drain. We have to be able to hit it.
Just to be clear, I mean, this was sort of the new ring, but you couldn't figure out what that manhole was for. But if that manhole is taking the water and taking it to that folks pit, then that explains it. But if all you're doing with the manhole is creating a seepage pit, it'd seem like an inefficient seepage pit. What is the manhole?
The man, the manhole that we're speaking of right here. Our stormpipe is gonna, you know, basically the stormpipe has to have somewhere to daylight at five foot deep. And that's not achievable anywhere on this site, anywhere. So you can't take that anywhere. So you have to take it somewhere. And we've worked with the, the city, White Pit, to try to come up with a way to make this work. And with their help and their direction, we came to this conclusion of we'll, we'll take basically a manhole and turn it and have that pipe come into it. And, you know, it'll be deep, it'll go down ten foot, it'll be open on the bottom, filled with rocks so that it can run through that sand layer. And then it'll, it'll fill that manhole and as, you know, it's gonna fill, and then we'll have a graded top on the top of it. And that water will spill out the top and, you know, begin to run down the ditch. Or, you know, in a huge event, you know, as the water comes out, it, and the ditch is starting to become full, it can back up into this area. They were trying to create a way to make that work and achieve a little more storage capacity in a large, large vent.
Really, the reason we came with this idea of instead of having an open water surface pond, it will be not helpful for the kids. So the city incurred, came up with this idea to go underground, so we make it more safe for that area.
Appreciate that.
Because the other, the other option is that line comes in at five foot, which that'll never drain. You'll have, there will be, there'll be a portion of a pond that would never drain. So that's why we ended up with this direction.
And we looked at, part of what we'll do too is brush the area, but if we need to put plant, trees and brush it up, or and put your fence back if it needed to be go back, we'll, that will be part of what we'll be willing to do, to put the fence back, but at the same time, brush it up a little bit with having trees on the, on one side of the fence as Kurt went in and did that part of it.
We'll, we'll admit it's a little bit of an out of box thinking than normal detention facilities that were typically designed where it's just you dig it down and hold water.
But it wasn't that easy in that location.
Yeah, with no grade, I mean, we've got like two and a half to three feet of grade over the whole site to work with. They're just, when you start introducing stormpipe from the street, it makes it really challenging to make everything work.
Where is the water flow coming from, spruce going north or in which direction are, is the water moving?
You know, Jenny Barker's draining to the center here.
So it's coming off Jenny and?
And Jenny Barker into an existing inlet that's already there. That's the water that you see that if you were to drive by it and see the little, you know, where it comes out right out here, that's the water that's coming off of Jenny Barker. And then all of this development's water would be draining to the center as well and then dumping into that and coming down here.
And they're going where once they?
And then dump, and then dumping and running to the west.
Just going right behind our school?
Yeah.
And, and the, the part behind our school would remain open, like an open ditch?
The open ditch, yes, 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 yes. Just like what it is right now.
Well, it's not cement lined, I don't think, is it?
Well, not, not this portion of it. I would recommend it. It's pretty flat through there.
It all drains, drains district number two and then back to the roof, that direction. And of course, if you did concrete line, it would get water away quicker.
Yeah, if you go out there right now, there's standing water in that ditch right now.
So in the hundred year flood, what, what are, what's that gonna impact our school? I mean, right now, there we have a little bit of a burn type on the edge of that ditch, but.
You're, you're.
I don't know.
The, the school is sitting at about twenty-eight, twenty-six as far as your elevation. And our ditch is sitting at twenty, I think it's, the top of the ditch is at twenty-eight, twenty-two. So you've got four feet of grade there and the, I.
Major flood.
The way, the way the area is designed is not to fill this area, is to come back and to fill this area. And if it were to, it's gonna run out onto Spruce Street before it would run out here into your school.
So basically, it's gonna end up on a property, on a, another. So are, are you planning, this plan was to grade, regrade the adjacent lot so it would drain towards Spruce or so it would continue back towards the ditch?
It would continue back to, towards the ditch, but in a big event like you're talking about where this area is gonna be filled, it would, the street is lower than your building. So it would run out into the street before it would ever run out to flood your building.
So your proposal includes regrading that grain area, three to one?
Yeah, regrading that area so it can run, so you can get a little better slope back towards that ditch.
And the reason you need our property is because of the existing ditch where it is existing?
Yes.
Versus putting it on the yellow?
Yes.
Why not put it on your own property?
Yes.
Yeah, because of what exists already?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
If the area agreed, used to the school, the area agreed there where the water in a major dam would run back to the south, that area there still could be used for a football field or soccer field.
Yeah, we'll go back and recede.
We, we can, we can still use that area if we desire.
Yes, sir.
To do so in the future somehow, some like.
Yes.
Well, we've always liked to have some open area, not houses right up against our building, so it goes along and will continue that.
I, I'm sorry, but I still don't understand why not just maintain the ditch at, at the current area and put cement bed or whatever. I, I don't understand why. It seems to me having it come down and then go back up, it's gonna, it'll make it even, maybe pile up more of it, debris and this. Why would, why would you not just keep it straight on, on the yellow portion of the property?
Why would you go straight, you mean?
Right, yeah, why?
It's going straight.
Because they, it's unfit to that.
In this area, that could happen. Because we're gonna have street and alley, so it's gonna be, the ditch can't continue to exist at this point. Once we get further to the west, I mean, the desire, you know, not only by the developer, but also by the city, is to have, you know, a connecting alley over to the next development so that they can run trash trucks or get their utilities or whatever. Because it's just, that's the city standard is to have alleys. So that's why they have the alley put back there. Currently, if you see where the, where the brown line is there, that's the property line. So the ditch is half on the school's property. So when we put that alley in there, you know, we're gonna, the ditch has to go somewhere. And that's where the city worked with us, and that's where they kind of directed us, well, we can, you know, let's reroute it to the south, we can work with the school. And that's, that's where we, where we ended up.
Well, I appreciate that. There'd be, it would be helpful perhaps to have an alley, and it would be helpful, needed to have the, some sort of water drainage, but I, I don't think it necessarily makes a lot of sense to dip it down on to district property. It looks artificial to me to do that rather than just leave it straight where it already is and have the alley on the, on the developer property.
I mean, another desire, I guess, the city had was to find a way to create a little more detention, temporary detention in large events. And that was where they saw the, the opportunity to, well, if we can come back and regrade this area and work with the school and try to get that, you know, we can reroute the ditch to the south, regrade this, and then in a big event, we, the city has a little storage capacity in that open field area for stormwater. Where if the ditch remains, that there is no extra storage capacity they're trying to create.
In a major event, if you know the answer, how long will the water be collected and being drained every year to the east or school?
It's hard, I mean, it's hard to say with the, with, whatever kind of event may happen. I mean, the idea is.
Probably it's rain.
I, I can't list the whole number out to you, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I don't know, I think there would be a way to count.
If, there, there are, but I don't have those numbers off with me. You know, the way it's designed is it's not designed to hold water. So as the ditch runs, this water drains back and runs. So as soon as the water is out of the ditch at, it, it, you know, it's running back towards the ditch and running out. It's, you know, in a normal, in a normal pond where we would dig a hole and we have a pipe down in the bottom of it that would drain somewhere else into some other storm drainage. You know, we would say, you know, the idea or the design of the facility would be to drain back, drain that out. And, you know, some cities require thirty-six hours, some cities require forty-eight hours. I mean, in this situation, it's kind of, kind of different from that scenario because we're not dealing with much of a known factor of how this ditch is draining out and how fast it's draining out. Because we didn't survey the whole ditch all the way down, just, you can see the, how fast that water's running through there.
There would be a drainage, which goes on west, it would be either one?
Yes, yes.
You would have to do any additional work to the existing ditch and what of your development would be ready, then you have to do?
Yeah, no, there's not any plans for that.
Well, it seems like the city would have specs, particularly in collaboration with you on the design, run up again, and how this design meets that criteria.
Yeah, I mean, they're, we've been working with Steve Patrell and C W Harper there and, working with them very closely to kind of come up with, you know, how big, how, how much, how much area we need to try to accommodate for. It's really not designed to hold water, it's just, it's designed to still be a ditch, it's just, like I said, it's just wider in this area. So as, if the ditch were to become over capacity, there's somewhere for that to go temporarily as the ditch comes, as the ditch water level comes back down.
Instead of top, I know where it'll, where it can.
Yeah, yeah. Like if that scenario were to happen, if the ditch was to fill now and overcome the ditch, it would, you know, run out into this area and just kind of sit.
Well, this is a drainage district currently, and so it would be nice to know how this fits in with the drainage plan of the district. It's also city, so it'd be nice to know how that fits in with that plan.
Well, I think it fits in, this is, you know, kind of one of the areas they kind of highlighted.
That's, after we met with them, that's what they came up with, Steve Patrell, I mean, this, before we came in front of you today, we had a lot of meetings with them on that, that's how they came up with it.
And I'm sure they have the answer, and that's why I'm saying, I'm sure what that is.
Aren't you raising the elevation of the home sites from what they currently?
Of the existing grade would be currently, yes.
So, so to me, this appears that it, by raising the elevation of the surrounding area and, and basically we're gonna accumulate water in that drainage area more than we would have normally.
You're just, like doing that, so aren't you just facilitating the water movement currently and just stay put because of how flat it is?
Normally, would you, you design these things as a temporary retention because you have this peak runoff there, rain event hits, it runs off the roofs, runs into these sewers, comes out of that manhole apparently, you know, this water to deal with. And so you, if the ditch is not have, is not having carrying capacity downstream, you need it to back up in some design fashion so that green space would be contemplated as that temporary retention. Of course, you wouldn't want to stay there very long to kill grass, or is there?
Yeah.
mosquitoes alert. So the only question really seems to be, besides the land use question to the board, is from a drainage standpoint, is the capacity there to get rid of the water quick enough? Because, you know, the, the existing capacity able to take your plan and, and actually allow it to get rid of water sufficiently?
Yeah, and I, you know, I do, one of the numbers that we were talking about is for a hundred years still, as far as size. Taking off the, you know, just a little bit amount of dirt that we were, we're talking about here easily handles the runoff from this development in that area.
And it was just on half of it, we're gonna take the dirt off.
Yeah, we're not, we're, you know, just about, you know, somewhere in here is where we're digging that dirt.
Yeah, not, we're not taking dirt all, or it's just gonna be about less than half of it, or quarter of it, that's where we're gonna take some of the dirt. And it's just mainly, just taking the tough soil on it, so there's not much worth taking a lot out of it.
So this, this plan would actually help pull the water away from that property, you know, property a lot quicker, especially with four, four foot concrete bottom and bottom of the ditch?
Yeah, it, um, yes, because right, currently, right now, this whole area right here doesn't even, barely has one foot of fall over it, will be creating two foot of fall over it.
But currently, if we get a major rain, you know, I have seen on the property, on the property green, we have understanding of that area.
But isn't the standing water going over to the yellow, the developed area too? Or is it just that one?
Well, but from what I've seen, it just stands in that whole area in there. And there's some water, the water will run out to the north, I mean, there's some water that runs out to the north and then to the east, and then there's a pond there right now existing, and it just sets right there. That's, that's what I've seen. The, the water doesn't get away from that property very fast. Look, we have a lot of property, that the water doesn't get away from it very fast.
How many acres is that strip of property adjacent to the school there? I know you're, you're asking for point three six, but how much is that whole green space? Do you have any?
I didn't calculate the whole open space here.
Because basically, that's an, an excess use of that property that is district property that we currently have. Raising the grade of the surrounding property creates sort of a valley there, which is gonna have increased water drainage, and it, more of the time, it's adjacent to the school that we have a big investment in and all the students, we're not burned as far as I know, they're on that side or the back. So I, I think this bears some thought.
You're about, you're about, you know, right here, you're at twenty-eight, twenty-six. And down here, you'd be at twenty-eight, twenty-two. So your building's four foot higher than where the top of the ditch would be. So this, the building is higher.
We're eliminating pits, they're already there, we're raising surrounding properties to ensure that that development doesn't flood out in the same event. And we're creating a place, it looks to me like, for that water to go in a designed drain. And so you've got the two questions, basically, is how much extra burn is there gonna be on that property, school property for temporary retention? And do we have adequate exit strategy for that water under a designed event? And I'm presuming that the city, the district, drainage district has that information. I don't know, I'm just saying, it's not being presented here.
Can that information be included with the proposal?
Yeah, yeah, we can get with Steve.
Do you mind looking at our permission on our behalf?
And we're just talking from the backside of the house towards the property. The front side of the house will drain towards the street to the storm sewers and all that, so we're, we're just talking from the backside of the house, backyard. And right now, so the water's standing all along our property now. But now, we're kind of creating an avenue for it to run and pull water away. It's gonna be the front side too. But I understand it because the front side drains to Jenny Barker, Jenny Barker drains to that one location, that location, the storm drains will drain into the manhole, the manhole upwells and, and exits down to the ditch. Yeah, we can get that information from Steve Patrell.
Yeah, on the overall drainage district's plan.
Appreciate that.
Boy, there's no question, people have to take out the box down there if it is.
Yeah, it's very challenging.
And, um, I, I've seen our fence line there, how far on the other side of that fence line does our property go to the middle of the ditch?
Yeah, currently, the fence line runs, you know, you see where I have this little gray line there where the concrete bottom would be, that's basically where your fence line is now.
And that's our property.
The fence line is the property line?
It is, six inches or so, I think, is.
Well, in the survey, it showed it at the middle of the ditch.
Yeah, so we maybe have some easement there with that ditch that's ours, so.
So what are you proposing, the fence line to the, the east there?
We, if we were, you know, our recommendation is that that fence line would run on the north side along the alley instead of on the south side of the ditch so that in an event where this is starting to fill back in, that fence isn't serving as a restriction, some way to collect, you know, debris later.
But is part of the reason we have that fence to keep our students from going into ditches and rolling down?
We could have the fence on that side, but. We could have the fence on that side, that's just what they're recommending. We could have the fence on that side, we could raise it up. We raise our fences up anyway about four, three, four inches.
I mean, and the fence, you know, it can also, you know, turn and make a right corner, you know, a right hand turn down to, and head north and south, it doesn't, you know, you know, right, you know, right now, there's, you're not completely fenced in over there. It's just, you, you know, you can kind of walk around, you know, try to...
We, we have schools now that lie out to Georgia Matthews lies along, uh, I guess that's P D Route. It lies right along the edge of it right there. But there is, there's a small fence there, I don't think it's six foot, the Georgia Matthews fence that runs along the ditch. It's just a four foot fence that, does that do not, so, yeah, so we do want it runs right through town. And we have a school that sets her right on, right by it. I don't think the water's ever come out of it I've ever seen, but I've seen it run pretty full.
Yeah.
Can you tell me what the, the difference in elevation is between the middle of the green lot and where our school is?
This is it.
Like, if that floods, how much would...
Four feet.
Four feet.
Four feet?
Yeah.
And that's when it's coming under the door? Or what, I mean, I don't understand because I've seen that and it appears like everything's very flat out there.
You've got a pretty good berm around, around the edge of the school, around, around the parking lot. I drove out there before I came here this evening. There, right here, that's what these lines are, that's, that's a one foot contour line each, each one of those. And you're, you're tying in here at twenty-six. So, your building is sitting at twenty-eight, twenty-six. Or maybe just even a little higher than that. And this area out here would be at twenty-eight, twenty-two. So, you have four feet or maybe some change after that, an elevation change.
And you're proposing to scrape part of the, the green area to the...
Yes, we would cut, cut back in here to cut back into it to create, you know, try to create that half percent slope across what would be a practice field or potential field in the future to kind of give it a little more usage and better drainage than what it currently has right now.
And looking at your map, even at your highest points in your neighborhoods, you're still below the level of the school.
Yeah.
The exception is when you get to that far north end. So, I guess if it floods, the school will just flood, although basically that old neighborhood.
Yeah, if the school's under water, yeah, all those homes are under water, there's, there's water running in.
Do you mind you can kind of rip it?
Maybe.
We got bigger issues, we need to start, start building yard.
Yeah.
Where will the work go that you're planning to scrape off of there? Has it gone towards the school to burn it or...
Um, we use a little bit to reshape this area in here to create the new ditch. And then any excess after that would be just used on, on the development site.
Okay, so there's also additional, I guess, dirt there?
If I, if I understand this correct, the city has approved this plan?
It's a correct.
Yes.
Most of it actually was their idea.
Yeah.
We just got it with Curth to engineer it, but that was actually the city's idea to make it workable for both of us to be good neighbors. That was really the city's idea to make that work this way.
And so, the city should be able to answer distributor's questions and be able to put in answers.
Yeah.
Yes.
And part of what the structure of the manhole, so that the kids could get in there?
No, it would be a graded top and those can be provided where they're locked so that they can't even be open. They weigh several hundred pounds to be dealing with. But they have the ability to purchase one that's lockable, so that it can't even be...
That's what we talked to Steve Cutrell too in the city, is to have the lockable.
Well, we don't need to take that question tonight. Are there any other questions while we're seeing this here, props here? Are you planning to replant, really spray for the grass?
I'm just saying that chairman, there's a lot to think about here, but it is exciting to see that area develop.
Oh, I mean, that, especially in, in high need home ranges and...
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for considering that.
We're really excited about it.
Thank you for being good neighbors and coming to us proactively with this, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely. We know the demand is there, you know, we're looking to put that idea and I think, you know, we're gonna try to press up the area and we'll be aware when for both of us, hopefully, in the papers, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time as well, we'll be back with you after November ten.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.